I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings that you've provided so generously to our nation and to this community. We live in freedom and we enjoy the blessing of peace. You sustained us and protected us during the frigid days of winter, and we ask your care and protection as we enter this season of violent weather. May we never take your blessings for granted. Give to the leaders of our nation, our state, and our local government wisdom, good judgment, and integrity of character, so that we can continually live in peace and in freedom. We also ask that you watch over the many people who do not enjoy these blessings. Grant your guidance to those who gather here this evening. May they faithfully serve the people of this city, may the ways provide for the common good. We pray this through Christ alone.
Roll call. Councilwoman Kern is absent tonight, but we still have a quorum and we'll proceed with business. First up is approval of tonight's agenda. Does any council member have any questions on tonight's agenda or additions to it?
I make a motion to accept the agenda as stated.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda approved. This is some comments. Hi Julie.
Good evening. Hi, council. Sorry, just figured public comment. You know, I had a request in for the $20,000 that you guys had approved a while back, and now that there's actually been some action, I figured it was the appropriate time. I needed to ask for it before there was anything to actually see. And just maybe update you a little bit. I thought that would be great, and I'd show up and, I mean, y'all just drove here and they're unload in the woods, so very exciting. And progress is moving forward with that. So, thank you for your contribution. It's important, just maybe a little better understanding as matching funds, the amount of matching funds that we had to come up with that could not be ARPA funds, could not be federal funds. Your contribution was significant to allowing us to move forward with the grants, so just wanted to thank you for that. I am in the process, I guess, beginning process, of applying for some additional funds to help maintain that over the future. I feel like we're handing a building, which is nice, but it's responsibility. And so, we're handing them something to maintain, something to pay property taxes on, something to pay insurance on. And there's the opportunity right now to kind of gain some grant funds to help cover those expenses, and we are doing everything that we can to obtain some of those. I say "we" as in Katie and I. So Katie is now the director of private county economic development, and I'm staying on as project coordinator for the time. So, we've had some change, and I don't know if she's been in here or if you guys are all familiar with her, but I'll make sure to have her get on the agenda and just come and make sure to introduce herself to you. She's been working as my childcare specialist for a little over about a year and a half now. So, during that time, I've been working to train and teach her a lot of things, so there was a good succession plan, and I wouldn't have stepped down if I wouldn't have felt comfortable in her abilities. So, things are working as they should, things are progressing. And that's all. I just wanted to come and make sure. If you guys had any questions, I'd be able to at least address them. I don't know if I can answer them, but address them.
Thanks for your update, Julie. Any questions?
Okay.
Thanks for stopping by.
Thank you much.
Any further public comments? Hearing none, we'll move along with our consent agenda. That includes the minutes of our March 3 meeting and appropriations ordinance 1288.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Flip a coin as to who moved and who seconded. It's been moved and seconded to approve consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda approved. Moving along to our items of business tonight. Next, first up is just again a review of our annual insurance policy renewal. And Janine is here, so she'll walk us through that.
Good evening. Did Stacy give you the updated summary that I just received like a couple hours ago? So, yeah. So, which that's exciting news because they, Underwriter did an update, and the update was a little bit of better adjustment on the rate of the property. So, that works out pretty well. And then, there really wasn't much change going on this year. The only change, I will say, that is, you know, every year you get a dividend payment off of that Kansas Musible Utility Safety Group. And so, they decided to move the dividend year, instead of it being from April 1st to March 31st every year, they decided to do it from the whole calendar year, January 1st to December 31st. So, being with that, they're going to start that for 2024, and so they're going to do that from April 1st to December 31st. And so, yeah, so you get the, they already said what the dividend was, is that, you know, it was $9,856. So, that will be coming to you. And, I mean, really, the rate didn't go up a whole lot, so, which is great because in the, you know, the last several years in the past, it had gone up quite a bit, unfortunately. So, this was, you know, yes, it is, it has gone up, but this is way significantly less than it has, so by all means. Yeah, other than that, we have, again, the airport liability renewal is coming up April 25th. I haven't received anything on that yet. I'm waiting on to news for that yet. And, yeah, May 24th is the Bigwell liability, liability renewal too, so. Any questions? Any concerns? Oh, the, I will tell you, I'm sorry, the mod rate for the workers' comp. I always try to tell you that. I apologize. This year, it's at .87, so it's still really good. Last year was .86, but we're still really good right now, so.
Are council questions on the renewal quote? Council, are everyone comfortable with renewing our coverage with EMC that we've had in the past?
Everything's going up.
Well, if that's the consensus, council would entertain a motion to approve the presented quote for our insurance renewal.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve presented quote for insurance coverage for the next year. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Julie. All right. Next item of business is a continuation of something we talked about a little bit at the last meeting, but that's discussion of potential location for the mural project that may happen.
Yes, so I have a printout for everyone. As you guys know, Dave Lowenstein, our resident mural expert, was here on Didda's site visit. Some of you may know that we had solidified permission to use the gray in Ben on the Alliance Act elevator as a spot for a mural. So, you might be a little surprised that this actually says, "Why the old pool house is the best choice." After Dave's visit, we were both encouraged, but also left feeling like we needed to reevaluate the canvas. Price has a lot to do with that. Dave's expert recommendation meant a lot to us because it was the first thing that stood out to him as the best place to do it for what we want to do. So, our biggest need and want with this project is to tell the story of Greensburg and incorporate that storytelling. We didn't want to have just a big sticker image. And after Dave came out and saw the site, we feel like that's what we would get. We would lose that storytelling capability because people are flying by at 30, if we're lucky, miles per hour through town. It doesn't offer a space for engagement as far as being able to get out of your car and interact with it. And it's very, very costly to do something that size. We knew it was going to be expensive, but after Dave was here, we started talking about insurance. And luckily, it was a very windy day, so we knew kind of exactly what he could be dealing with as far as the elements, and it was dangerous, I would say, number one, unpleasant at the very least. There's not a lot of space between the bin and, I don't know if it's a speed building, but like where you go on high speed, I guess I don't know what they call it, but there's not a lot of space there. The space that was there was not level or solid, so it would be really difficult to put heavy even scaffolding or scissor lift, things like that. It would be very uneven. We started getting concerned about the number of days he'd be able to work safely with the wind. And also, it's a working elevator, so all of the dirt and dust and grain debris would be blowing into the paint the entire time. So, these are all the reasons that we feel like the pool house would be the best choice. I know we kind of discussed this a little bit, probably two, maybe even three years ago now. But this is kind of what we settle on. So, I'll let you guys just kind of glance at this as I go through. We've already covered, it's Dave's recommendation because of the safety factors. With the, with the big canvas, we thought scaling down would help achieve our goal a lot easier. Number one, safety, it's something, when Dave was here, we did two community engagement meetings. One with the art class that was pretty much full of seniors in high school. And then we also did a meeting of, at the senior center, like with the senior citizens, so pretty much anyone who could come, but it was mostly senior citizens. One of the things that both groups said totally unprompted, and no one had attended both meetings, was how important it was for the other generation to be able to be as involved as they wanted to be. So, both, both of them were very concerned about that intergenerational cooperation. We thought that was great. They both loved the idea of anyone that wanted to actually be included in the work of the mural could do that in a place like the pool house. It's on the ground, there's not a lot of safety concerns, there's not, you know, a fall risk or anything like that. They could actually, whoever wanted to actually come paint could do that or be involved in whatever way. Some of the concerns that we had last time, I think the fire department had just been given permission to use that building to fill with smoke, basically. I don't know what the term now is, but to test their equipment and things like that. We looked at it, and there was a little bit of smoke that had kind of barreled out from the dressing room doors, but it was so insignificant that I don't think you could have found it unless you were actually looking for it. That I don't think it's affected the outside, surely not structurally. I mean, it's a giant concrete building, and like Stacy said, the ceilings in the dressing rooms are open. So, there's only really a small part of that that I'm sure that you stand away for the purpose that they were seeking. We did talk about the potential of the four lane bypass. You know, that's been a thing for 30, 40 years. I remember being in the backseat of my parents' car as a kid, and they were talking about, "Oh, I wonder when the highway's supposed to come through here." So, while valid, it probably is not something that needs to be thought of immediately or poses like an immediate risk. It could be 20 years, and by that time, the mural could need to be thoroughly redone. Just jumping up to cost, it is significantly, the budget would need to be significantly less than a canvas like the elevator. We were thinking, we, I contacted the mural artists. Mind you, that was not Dave Lowenstein, but the one that did the full mural in Ben. I don't know if you guys, I'm sure you saw it on social media, but if you pass by, it's basically ground to 150 feet near, and she charged $125,000 for that. So, Dave was thinking more along the lines of 25 to, I think, 40 tops, really, as far as budget on something like the pool house. So, that would be a lot more manageable for those of us that are trading together funds. And I've got several ideas on funding. There are grants still, some tourism extra money that we would ask for now when it's time to do the 2026 budget, but.
You want to put that all on Bigwell budget? Or is economic development going to support it?
I don't know about economic development, definitely not all Bigwell, but tourism has quite a bit extra in their cash budget that we would, we would certainly pay for global. There's another $10,000 grant that we could utilize. And the art center has volunteered to do an in-kind donation of Dave's accommodations. So, that will save us pretty significantly as well. Accommodation is something artists pretty much expect in their day, so. So, that will help keep that up down to it.
But a good portion of the funding, we're hoping, will come from grants. There are several, two mural grants available through a couple different state agencies. And then there's another community foundation-ish grant available right now that we're hoping to apply for also.
That could be up to $25,000.
So, I'm assuming you're going to try and acquire those grants before we sign off, so you got to do it, or?
Yes. I mean, yeah, we're not going to officially engage the artists until we have all the funds in place.
Yes, and this would, at the very least, be a 2026 project at this point. This is not something that could happen this year.
Yeah. I guess for tonight's conversation, just to have some discussion with you is regarding the pool house being a potential location, and if that's something that you would be okay with us pursuing. I think in just the conversations, like Heather said, while the gray elevator would be really awesome, there's so many question marks, and then also the cost is significant, but a lot of question marks too that are unanswered as far as what that cost might look like. Equipment rental is something she didn't completely touch on, but the boom lifts that would be required to get to that height is quite a bit. And then also just with our weather, how many days, months it would take to actually complete a project of that scale. So, we were thinking something more on a ground level-ish, might be a little more attainable at this time. And then maybe in the future, we can look at a bigger project, but.
Insurance also started to, as we started having the conversation, it kind of snowballed into, well, yes, we have permission from Alliance Act, which was wonderful of them, but whose insurance takes care of this sort of thing? And we just have a lot less liability if someone's not hitting 150 feet up here on anyone's, anyone's plate.
Is this planned to go around the entirety of the building?
Yes, and that is something that I also should add. I didn't include there, but one of the things that we would like to have happen, and we would definitely need permission from the city to do, we would like to take down the chain link fence with the barbed wire on top and remove the core, the old chlorine tanks, so you could walk through 16 and the entire outside of the building could be painted. So, there would be an aspect of cleanup, but we were joking that this project could actually make money because you guys could sell that some.
For scrap.
Yeah. I thought it would have the engines and everything.
Well, I definitely like the idea of keeping costs manageable, especially this is our first kind of big public art project for a while, especially a mural like this. No need to start huge straight off the bat. One thing to consider as well, and I'm not against using the pool house for this purpose, but it's kind of a flip side. We talked about one of the benefits of placing it there is public accessibility, that anyone can just walk up, get close to it. The flip side of that is potential for vandalism and things like that, which we have had issues with that before. But just something to think about, because if we do, we might want to consider putting security cameras or something like that up if we're investing tens of thousands of dollars in a mural that any teenager can go with a can of spray paint in a mural.
Yeah, and that was something that I said to Dave, and I was like, you know, I was a little nervous too about having it so accessible. Like, I love the idea of people being able to be a part of it, but then also what happens afterwards. And Dave has done voting class, and he's worked all over the world, and he was like, "I've never seen that before." So, it sounds like people are respectful, even teenagers, when they're, they can see the effort. And I would say probably even more so, like if the, anyone from the high school that wants to work on it is able to, because then they would have more skin in the game, or their grandparents can work on it. I mean, you'd be less likely to do something your grandma's not there and paying it in the scourging heat in August, so. But yeah, I do understand them as well.
When it comes to the funding part of it, I would like to see what you come up with on your grants first. Because you say 25 to 40,000, most likely it'll be close to 40.
Yes.
I can guarantee you that.
Yeah, pretty good.
The 25 is to get your foot in the door, and the 40 is what I'm going to charge you.
Yeah, yeah.
But I'd be more interested seeing what the grants will provide first, before I'd be interested in committing a sizable amount of money to it.
Well, I don't think that's the decision we're looking at today, because probably even apply for those grants, you're going to have to know the scope of the project, where it's going to be. So, today, we're just saying, in principle, we're okay with us being located at the pool house. Again, knowing that down the road, we'll have to make decisions as far as funding and paying for it.
Because I've got to at least have a place to put it before I can write the rules.
I'll find a place.
My only hesitation is, there is quite a bit of smoke that rolls out of those doors that are messed up, and the fire department is going to do some work on those to make them venable so it is more usable, because right now, there's not enough ventilation through there to get good smoke flow for training purposes. So, I know there's going to be some modification in the work for those doors. Some of them are starting to melt and stuff like that, so I don't know what that does as far as hindering or whatever the pain.
Hey, who comes back and, comes back and touches this thing up in five or six years?
Dave.
Who does that?
The artist.
The artist, and he, he said that.
What if he's not around anymore, then what happens to? We've spent money on it, and it's slowly deteriorated. You're not going to get nothing back.
Well, go ahead.
I would think probably another muralist, but that is something that he does right into all of his contracts, is that when it is time, and he's typically retouching at 20 years, so by that time, the highway might be through, and it might be a non-issue, I don't know. But that is something that he writes into his contracts, that he's the first one that gets digs. And if it needs to be redone, we call him. And really, he wants us to call him before we make the decision to scrap it too. So, yeah, that, it would be the, and I don't think it would be the whole cost of totally redoing it, to do, redo and touch up, but that's not something we went into in depth necessarily in this meeting. But we did touch on that part.
And that was one question I asked, is what is a good typical lifespan?
Yeah, there you go.
And 20 years is not out of the question. The, the paint they use for murals, it's not just house, typical house paint. I forget the brand, but it's really made for this purpose. And he said it's really about how the surface gets prepped before anything else gets painted on there. So, if we were to do the pool house, we'd want to go in and sandblast, probably remove all of those layers and layers of decades of paint that are on there first, back down to the concrete surface. And to Nathan's point about around the doors, that is something I, I brought up, is really, that would be the only areas as far as the fire department using it that potentially, where that smoke would be, was coming out of those rolled up doors. So, that is, was part of our discussion too, or how we could minimize that or avoid those areas or something. So, it could have both uses.
Is that ours still?
Is it ours? Yes. Right, Janine's on our insurance. It's on our property insurance.
It's ours probably until and unless it becomes KDOT property.
That probably happens six months after.
They paid us.
Yeah, our, that probably would be.
Yeah, how much more do we can pay for KDOT mural here in the Bay Area?
$40,000.
I appreciate it.
They already paid us.
It might cost them 40, but it's going to cost them 80.
They already paid us for the building, we just didn't need it to them. So, we haven't, I don't think we've been made for like the park portion. Like, you get paid for the number of trees, for the equipment, anything like that, but they paid us for the pool house and the pool itself. That's how we built that. So, we just didn't deed then the property yet.
Tell me to get the deed for 40 grand.
Well, council had one at least said, good in principle, having it located at the pool house, so that a general consensus, at least give us staff enough to go on to start applying for some of these grants to figure out if we can pay for it, or we need more discussion. Everyone okay that if, you know, the grants fall in place, potentially having this at the pool house?
Well, you said the main thing denied is to decide whether we wanted or if they could do it out there or not, correct?
Right, this is just so that they can give an address when they're filling out their grant application, saying, "This is the scope of the project, this is where it would be located, this is how big it is." Because that's all things we're going to need to know to apply for these grants.
Make a motion.
I would, I don't think necessarily at this point. I think if there's, that's the consensus of council, that's enough for staff to go on to start applying for some of these grants, and then, once we get answers on some of those, maybe come and revisit if we get more concrete ideas about funding and that type of thing. Good enough, everybody?
Awesome. All right.
Okay.
Well, thanks, guys.
Thanks for your work, Heather.
All right. Next up on our items of business is Resolution 2025-04, adjusting our personnel policy section on nepotism, which we again discussed at our last meeting.
Correct. This was discussed at the last time, and direction was given to prepare a resolution to amend this section of our personnel policy to allow for family members to supervise for part-time and seasonal employees. That was the direction of the council at the last meeting with further oversight from the city administrator in those cases that we might have. So, Resolution 2025-04 would enact this change into our personnel policy.
Counsel, any questions on the resolution or discussion regarding it?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-04.
Second.
It's been seconded, approving Resolution 2025-04, altering the city's It's been moved and seconded approving Resolution 2025-04, altering the city's personnel policies section on nepotism. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution approved. All right, moving on to item in business number four, a section of our city code, which I think a lot of us didn't even know was in there, it sounds like.
Yes, in reviewing some other code, Chief Dennis came across this one and brought it and laid it on my desk and said, "What do you think about this?" And read through it and it is not a code we are currently enforcing. You will see that there are probably some opportunities, opportunities isn't the right word, instances here in the community that if we wanted to enforce it, we could, but my question is to what purpose? I don't know that the city of Greensburg necessarily cares who has a pool table that is coin operated. I don't know that the city cares who has a pinball machine that is coin operated. Those are the type of amusement devices that are called out in this code and it requires an annual permit of ten dollars. Again, I don't know to what purpose. I did a little research going back to when this code was last updated and it was in nineteen eighty-eight. And at that time in the minutes, there wasn't much, but it read that somebody had come to the council and asked for this section of the code to be amended or rescinded and the council at that time chose to keep it and changed the fee amount to ten dollars. So at that time, there was a reason, unclear exactly what, but they decided to keep it and change the permit fee to ten dollars. And it's just been on our books since. I think any type of amusement device that would be like a slot machine that pays out, those would fall under state regulations and could be taken care of that way as far as gambling and everything. These are all devices that, in my opinion, I don't know why the city cares who has a coin op pool table. So just wanted to bring it to you to take a look at, see if you are interested in repealing this section of our code.
It's only going to gain us twenty, thirty dollars per year. That would be more paperwork.
And to what, to what purpose?
Yes.
That's my question is why do we want to know?
For that little.
And keep track of it. We repealed business licensing, gosh, at least a decade ago now. We don't even do business licensing anymore, other than for temporary vendors, food trucks, et cetera.
If it's not being enforced and we can't see any benefit to start enforcing it, no point in having it on our books.
I agree.
I agree.
Consensus of the council? So I would say, yeah, prepare.
You'll see it next time.
Yeah, okay. Any further discussion on that matter? All right, that takes care of items of business tonight. We'll move on to city staff reports, Stacy.
Tomorrow at the Business Park, we will receive the solar panel delivery. You may see if you're out for a drive this evening, there's already a semi sitting out there. He arrived today early, so if you find it odd, there's a semi parked there overnight, that's why. There will be a second one arriving tomorrow and then the crew to offload those out there. So exciting to see some progress. And that project still is on pause, not because of funding, but because of the last environmental review that is required with USDA. So working to still cross that hurdle to get the project officially underway. I emailed this out to you last week, but with Councilwoman Kern no longer serving on the tourism board, the tourism board bylaws say that there is to be a council representative to that board to serve. So I just wanted to verbally throw that out to you again, if there's any of you that would be interested in serving on the tourism board. I know that Councilman Trummel already serves on the housing authority, so I don't think he's probably interested in a second board appointment. No. So it's a pretty minimal.
I said no.
No. It's a pretty minimal commitment of about an hour meeting once a month. Heather and Janine both can attest, Janine's been a long time tourism board member. So if you're interested or have questions, please come talk to me, but the by, go ahead.
Let's move your meetings to the second Wednesday of the month at Core Rock.
So. You can think about it. The city police department slash the city is now owners of a Kia Soul. It is obnoxious green in color, that's how I would describe it, puce. That was seized through a traffic stop, the vehicle and four hundred fentanyl pills. And that has gone through the court system and now is the city's property. So if you see a green Kia Soul sitting down at our public works, that is why, it is now a city vehicle. In talking with Dennis about it a little bit, it does have a blue book value of ten thousand, twelve thousand dollars. It was still a good vehicle, going to have it cleaned out and detailed. Get it cleaned out and we might drive it a little bit, it's just an admin vehicle to go to some meetings. We may keep it for a little bit. In the future, we may bring an agenda item to you to get rid of the Tahoe and maybe keep that as an admin car. We may sell it and have the revenues off of that. So just want to let you know that the city is now an owner of.
It's kind of a green there, isn't it?
Green Kia Soul. The three public works employees next week will be attending the Kansas Rural Water Association Annual Conference in Wichita. And one of them will be taking the water certification test while he's there, so fingers crossed that turns out good. And this week, Christie will be going to the City Clerk's Spring Conference in Manhattan. The ball fields have been sprayed for weeds last week on a, we did have a calm day last week, believe it or not. I mentioned last time that K-Dot would be having some listening sessions across the southwest Kansas region and those are next week and you'll see I listed those in there. I planned to go to the one in Dodge, but there's also one in Pratt in the evening, if you're interested in attending. And you can let anybody know that you hear ask about highway issues, this is open to anybody in the public to go and give their input and hear about what they're talking about right now. So I would encourage you, if you have the opportunity, to attend one of these meetings and also encourage others that you hear talking about highway issues to go and let your opinions be heard. This is a great opportunity they're providing us to really hear from us what our concerns are since we're out here in this region. Next week, Cairo County United is holding their annual meeting on Wednesday evening and I've attached that invitation for you. And then in the agenda packet was the monthly police department report from Chief Davis.
Questions for Stacy? Hearing none, do we have any governing body comments tonight? Hearing none of those, that brings us to the end of our agenda, so we will adjourn the meeting. Thanks for your time, everybody.